We're going to call to order the committee workshop session of the Mecklenburg County Council for October 5th, 2021. We apologize for late start. We had an executive session and we'll explain a little more about that at the opening of the regular council meeting. So we will begin with the standing committees of Borough Council. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the committee minutes from the September 7th, 2021 meeting. And I would like someone to entertain a motion in that regard.
Mr. Miller makes the motion.
Is there a second? No. I think I heard Mrs. Martin's first. Second, are there any additions, revisions, or corrections? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the minutes are approved. First committee on the agenda is the municipal outreach committee, and that would be Mrs. Agarson.
This will be next, September 9th, to discuss updating our website. So we are working with them currently and are waiting for a date to come back and review.
They have, the last that we've talked to, the gentleman from Guardian, he's had a COVID exposure. They are getting called back up, running to full speed. We did get an email from him, but it's been touch and go talking to them because of the illnesses and sicknesses. So we're still working on that.
All right, perfect. We're excited to have a new website, but we'll be getting something next year. And this is all I have to report at this point.
Now, they're the bullet point for you to approve your minutes.
Okay.
So your committee will need to do that.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Sir?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
Thank you. Community and Economic Development, Mr. Miller.
In order of words, we have something from APD for comments.
I got a voicemail earlier this morning and I haven't had a chance to get back to this until now. Okay? Any questions or comments for Mr. Miller? Hearing none, the administration and ordinance, Mr. Anthony.
Also excited to hear about the comp plan piece and also want to talk about project, I guess you and I can get together afterwards about dates for the review of the budget. And we also have a fire finance committee coming to us, the finance committee on the 19th before the meeting of the council, to talk through where they're at and where they'd like to go. That is all.
Thank you. Any questions, Mrs. Agarson? Hearing none, we'll move on to the loan review committee. Mr. Miller?
Yes, we're in committee net, September 29th at 7:00 PM. And the one thing the committee routine and application was climate, the data reuse plan of David Mills, doing business of smoking pickles, bars and butcher shop with a potential recommendation. And the recommendation was, the committee did take a recommendation for conditional approval for Borough Council to give conditional approval for the expansion project approved by David Mills for smoking pickles, bars and butcher shop, condition on the project value now exceeding $1,170,000 and securing a signed purchase agreement for the site of the extension project. Committee also recommends a waiver of the maximum run out, recommending approval of the loan of $50,000 under number two of the program criteria for waivers. So the council will not see this come to our desk until there is a signed purchase agreement for the site. So that will have to be that conditional approval before council will review or approve, potentially approve this application. But on that, that was the only business we discussed at that time.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Miller. Moving on, personnel committee, Mrs. Agarson.
We're going to have to convert the team to discuss evaluations and staff needs in our office and we're planning on having a follow-up meeting hopefully in October so Joe and I have some dates when they're at, you know.
Okay, that's good because I have six applications for treasure. Three of them are local, very local, and they meet the criteria for experience and where they're working at now.
Do you think that we would be able to get a personnel committee meeting in before the next borough meeting?
Yeah.
Probably that Monday.
Yeah. Yeah, let's do, let's do that or the Thursday before.
Okay, perfect.
Okay?
We'll check our calendar and confirm. Thank you.
Everybody's got a date for me tonight. Thank you. Coffee Parks and Recreation, will you just stay at your seat, Mrs. Agarson?
So I'm going to defer to Roger because there are some repairs that need to be addressed as soon as possible and that I haven't heard of in the last few weeks.
Yeah, I'm not sure about repairs. I'm going to draw your attention to some photographs up here. This is the 34th side of the building. This is over right down. The police cars are parked out there and that, if you look right here, this is Chief Neff's office. This roof up here, we noticed a sagging roof. We had noticed roof leaks. And when one of, the CSO went up there the other week to look at it, he noticed that there was a broken beam in that ceiling. Here you can see how it's bowed down along the wall. Now, that's sitting on bricks there and it's still got a big bow in it. And this is, this roof up here is all, it comes down and then it kicks out at a very steep angle. And the structural engineer, we've had Ken Robinson's guys down to look at it, he has some concerns that in winter, it's not going to hold. It was not like this last year. This beam is a beam, and I'll show you here in a second, that's supporting that is cracked. This is where it's actually in the inside. There's two buildings over there and you saw on that roof, you can see the seam going down the roof. Trying to do this as quick as possible. This is, there's two buildings here. There's one out front and there's one in the back. That beam that's in the next picture that's coming out of the socket is right there at the end of the arrow, right where this is starting to collapse. Fortunately, we don't use that side for too much except for record storage. However, right now, and this is the beam here that broke. The guys tried to support it. They were going to try to put it back up where it was at, and I stopped them because if they would have, there's nothing underneath it, there's nothing underneath there to support it, it would have run right down to the floor and then we would have had injuries and everything else. Chief Myers and Lieutenant Curtis has told the guys not to be going in and out of that building over there. So they are finding alternate routes to get to the vehicles, to get off the call and stuff like that. Chief Neff, we've tried to tell him to kind of, you know, be careful when he's going through there. We haven't noticed anything on the first floor, but we have noticed on this second floor where all the records are kept up there, the floor is starting to get wonky further away from that, which is an indication that it's moving even more. So we have some concerns about it. A meeting with Engineer Rogowski tomorrow morning to discuss the possibility of removing that entire building. The old, the old structure that's up there, we keep running into issues over and over again. We have the roof reined to fix repairs, but we're fixing the roof constantly on there. It's just, it's, stuff is going bad over there and we're not, with us not being over there all the time, we're not monitoring as much as what we should. So one of the things that we talked about doing was potentially putting in some awnings over there, tearing that building completely down. Gary's door would be coming out, exterior doors to go into his office, and making that a covered portico for police parking cars. Filling in the back wall back here and moving our record storage to the back, back here in the old garage. That way, the police cars would be at least undercover. We have ways of hooking up the antennas and stuff to the cameras. At least they're not getting snow covered, they're not in the weather, but they still, and they'd all be out front so that the guys could get in and out very quickly to get to them. And we wouldn't have to worry about the structure of this thing last, to try and maintain this to last any longer. The fix for this is probably in the neighborhood of $70,000 to $75,000 because they'd have to tear all that off. The whole roof would have to come off and then be rebuilt from the walls up to try to fix that roof. It's in that bad a shape. That was just a cost estimate that Ken Robinson's guy drew up. So there's, there's some serious problems over there. But at this point in time, Chief and I talked, it's mostly paper records up there. I think Gary, you were up there. I, we, yeah. Roger, if you could go to this one.
Pick the next picture.
That one, if I'm not mistaken, there is another beam up at the roof that's got a big crack in it too.
Yes.
The one, the one.
This one back there.
That one is the one that's actually pulling out of.
That's the one that's pulling out of the wall sock.
Right there, yeah. It's actually, when it comes across, it comes across and it's supposed to run perpendicular or parallel to the wall, but it actually bows down and comes in away from it, and that's what's actually pulling it out. There's not much, and I'll put it this way, everybody knows Joel from Susquehanna Valley Roofing, right? He would not get on that roof. He would not let his guys get on that roof. And I, Joel has been, Joel's been the roofer here for quite a while, and he, he would not let his guys get up there to fix anything on that roof. So, but that's kind of where we're at right now. When Suge and I go over this and we, you know, maybe get some parking figured out, get some cost estimate, I have looked at structures, they call them hail structures, I don't know how they'd handle the snow, but it's, they're done nice things, they're pretty wide open, they have big stands, so it would allow for the police to have, you know, all their cars parked out front here, and they can be lighted, they can be lit, we can put cameras in there, security can be upgraded and everything else, so. And we have a whole lot less maintenance than what we're going to have in that building. So that's it in a nutshell. As soon as I get more information on that, we'll move forward, but we're going to try to limit the amount of people that are in that building over there at one time.
The proposal, you're proposing just taking the back half of that building or the entire?
It would be, uh, it would be from this wall right here out, with this all of that would go.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and this, this, you see the awning, the lean tube they call it, here, that would come out, and then the building would start like right here and go back as a single story there. So, and this, like I said, this is where Gary's, this is where Chief Neff's office is at, right inside there. And the way the building is laid out, there's actually two walls there that are buddied together, so we wouldn't have, wouldn't have a structural problem there because the wall's already supported, the roof there, the flat roof is already supported with another wall. So we basically, they're separate buildings, we can almost tear that down. The only thing we have to do is, is turn Gary's door into an exterior door instead of an interior door.
And then probably throw up some fence around there or?
We could, well, it depends on what we can do for the parking, because parking gets a little difficult in there, especially like, you see where the agway trailer is sitting here? The property line is kind of weird here because it's kind of over here where the pavement changes. So there's not a whole lot of room there to do much with it, so we have to, we're going to have to look at how we can get police cars in and out so that they're not parked on top of one another and, you know, people get parked in.
But if that, if that building is gone, the police.
I have enough for, yeah, we have enough for, we have enough, we would probably put, I think I came close to 10 police cars out there plus some extra parking spots.
Oh, boy.
So.
Oh, something, huh?
But instead of spending the extra $30,000 to fix the garage door, and we can just do something here and be done with it, and then it'd be a whole lot cheaper to fix the garage door than it would be trying to maintain that part of that building. I hate to do it because it is a stored building, but.
Well, would be newer, I mean, if the planning system, oh, yeah, would really, like I saw those old beams and stuff, is that anything we could, like, cost-wise?
We could probably, yeah, there's probably people out there who, yeah, we'd advertise it and that's, so those barn builder people that are all, yeah. And those bricks, those, those walls are solid brick, both inside and outside, so. As a matter of fact, some of the pictures back here are up in that, that second floor.
Isn't this building a similar structure to that one over there? Weren't these like kind of twin?
Yeah, but they modified a lot over here. Over there, they didn't have, they weren't having offices, they weren't having, they just got the workout area. So a lot of that structure was done the same. The second floor that's put in there isn't, isn't supported with anything, it's pocketed into the walls and it's, it's, the walls are moving, I mean, it's, you know, 150, 200-year-old brick, and it's starting to show its age because one is covered up, it's not maintained. I mean, here, temperature control over there, it's not, and upstairs in the police attic, a lot of that stuff was modified and moved up to allow for all the infrastructure that's upstairs. However, on that side, they didn't have to move anything up, they just left it the way it was, and it's been that way since when Drive Core moved out.
This building has been improved.
This building has, yeah, that's, because those two used to be two of those here. If you go out through, you'll see where they moved columns back and forth, and that transfers the whole way up through because upstairs in the ex-squad room, there's no columns, not two there at all. So that's all open up there, and they've redone all the roof structure above that, so.
Anything else, Mrs. Agarson?
Good thing to the good news, Roger.
Did some time for budgets.
Public�owers and safety, Mr. Thelman.
I don't have anything unless you do, Roger.
No, sir. All right. Any other items for this section of the meeting? Hearing none, the committee portion of the meeting is adjourned and. adjourned, and we will now call the October 5th, 2021 Borough Council meeting for the Borough Mechanics Board to order. We will begin with a pledge to the flag, followed by a moment of pride. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hold on.
President Woodruff.
Here.
Vice President Miller.
Here.
Councilwoman Ideren.
Here.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Here.
Councilwoman Bitter.
Here.
Councilwoman Shomr.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Lieutenant O'Keeffe.
Present.
Lieutenant McGee.
Here.
Chief Neff.
Here.
Manager Sodicki.
Here.
Assistant Manager Boyer. We have a forum.
Thank you. Are there any guests this evening?
None, no, no, sir.
Thank you. This time, are there any suggestions, comments, or requests? Hearing none, we'll move on to correspondence.
Just the testation engagement letter that we got today in the mail, or actually by email, from the Department of the Attorney General about our liquid fuel tax fund. That came today, I haven't even had a chance to work over that, so I provided that to everyone tonight. Thank you.
Before we move on to approval of the minutes, I am directed to announce that we held an executive session on September 21st, 2021, on a matter of personnel with no action taken. We had another executive session this evening prior to the meeting on a matter of personnel with no immediate action to be taken. So we will now move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on September 21st, 2021.
I'll make the motion to approve with one change, and that is in my fiscal value report. First, as we stated, that the 2021, the first four years that these were collected and which should be $929,000, not $129,000, in funds are available. So that's one change to amend. That change is made on the exception to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? No, second. All right, there's been a motion in the second to approve the minutes with the adjustment noted by Mr. Miller. Join further discussion. Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is the engineers' report.
Surprised if I may try to hijack the TV.
Hold on, I gotta give you permission. Should have never showed him that trick. Now, of course, we're going to have problems with it.
It's like updating my livestream.
Well, in order to last, well, to meet the goals of the meeting I was here, we've discussed the potential investment in the GIS, you know, application for the borough, and I wanted to provide a couple of visuals for the borough. We provided a similar type of choice to the authority over time. So this is, you know, the basic GIS platform that we would be developing also, and I have a couple of examples of other communities that use this, and this is one that we actually inherited over the last month or so, the authority asked us to go out and do some emergency inlet surveys. So this is an example of one day worth of data collection that we were able to do where you essentially have a map, and that's the basis of any GIS system that sits in the background, and that's all what they call open source mapping, meaning it comes from the magic in the clouds, and you can change that map. But those, you know, dots are collected on the iPad, and really, in this particular instance, all we were doing is reading these inlets that we were looking at, you know, a red, yellow, and green kind of situation to identify what's, you know, what's in good shape, what's in bad shape, what's in mediocre shape. So this is kind of the very basic component of a GIS system, you know, essentially storing data based on a geographic orientation. And if you click on, you know, any of these boxes, it's ultimately a, it can be customized in kind of any form as you want to. You can zoom in, you can attach things, you can take pictures that are attached there, and of course, it's lagging there, but you can do a lot of different scenarios as to what, what it becomes a file cabinet, you know, for that particular inlet. So as time goes on, anything that you kind of store into that particular area can be easily found based on its geographic location as opposed to a paper copy in a file somewhere else. But the possibility becomes somewhat, somewhat else, so as you start looking at the other kinds of applications that are built out as part of the system, and this is one example on Springfield Township where, you know, they mapped their store of modern alcohol, for example. One of the things that these dots represents a very discrete point that can be, additional data can be uploaded to that and be able to store that data in those individual areas. You can go so far as to, you know, take the results of, as you recall, when we did a robotic survey, and this is an example in another township, in Concord Township, where that, that information is plugged into the GIS system, it's just another layer, so this can be easily turned on and off over the base map to be able to display what the ultimate results are of any given, you know, survey or something of that nature. And then on top of that, you can be built out, you know, who started to pave out streets over the course of time, you know, when streets have been paved, track, when their last maintenance has been done, all, you know, building yourself off of the map, and that's the idea behind the, the beauty of the, of the GIS system, that you're using location to determine what you're doing. And it provides some very, you know, very poignant visuals, you know, for an illiterate public and also council to be able to do certain types of planning. And then even as far as, you know, we're talking about sanitary series and things like that, you know, these, these mapping features can map just about, you know, anything that you can think of, and if you click on these various elements, you know, like the pipe itself, it can give you certain amounts of data that are attributable to that particular element. And once again, these are kind of, it's a style of life, we can make it as detailed as we want. But the beauty of the current technology is the fact that it does take a specialized piece of equipment to go collect this information, it really takes an iPad, and, you know, it's come a long way in that all of these mapping programs through Alishy and some of the other large players are all cloud-based, so they really manage all the software. So I just wanted to be able to, you know, provide council a little bit of a visual as to what that system could ultimately look like. That, a group of proposals, not a major this evening, but wanted to be able to display that, you know, for each bill, so. So that's all I have in that regard.
Thank you. Any questions?
Are you going to be going out again with Tim?
Yeah, so kind of a point to that is your, our, we just, we did one day work to try to achieve what kind of production we could get, and actually, I think we did 170 within a day, which is really good, we did a lot more than I thought we'd go to. So we go on to, you know, we're talking to authority, but try to maybe get out there right after the authority meeting and finish up. I think we're close to 400, 450 or something like that, so we probably have another day, day and a half, that we could get in there before, before the leaves start to fall because that would make things obviously intensely more complicated, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we need a little liaison reports. Downtown partnership.
I know we discussed the sort of town meeting, but we did have the groundbreaking for the D.C. Renaissance Project on the 18th, so thank you to everyone that came out to support them, and then followed by the wine, wine and art block, which was a good job downtown. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Agarson? Hearing none, we'll move on to the library, Mr. Thelman.
Okay, the library has, in the month of October, another dine-out to help benefit the Friends of the Simpson Library, and it's at Jojo's on Wednesday, October 13th. Now, the one thing I didn't take to look at, and I just thought of it now, is, is it the five of both Jojo's locations? Do you know that?
I do.
You know it, okay, yeah. So I'm not sure about that, but you do have to have one of the little flyers when you, 15% of the meal is donated to Friends of the Simpson Library, and you do have to have one of the flyers, and you can either download one on the internet or pick one up at the library, because that's Wednesday, October 13th, from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Not sure again whether it's at both Jojo's locations or just the, just the one in town. There is an October book sale, and it runs, typically, they always run at least two days, and sometimes they have a preview the night before, they do not for this one that I'm aware of, but the regular book sale is Saturday, October 23rd, from 9:00 till 2:00 PM. The bag sale, which is $10 for a bag, is Sunday, October 24th, from 1:00 to 3:00, and that's at their 114 North York Street location. The library is closed on October 27th, and that's all libraries in the county are closed that day, it's for staff development day, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Thelman? Hearing none, we move on to the museum association. As reported at the last meeting, on the 25th of September, we had the dedication of the Franka Flotter Gardens and a celebration of the 200 a celebration of the two-hundred-twentieth year of the, of the tavern. Um, additionally, the passenger station and Station Master's House over on Strawberry Alley have all been repainted, touched up and fixed up for a few more years before more repairs need to be done, but, uh, looks, looking good around, and we appreciate everybody's support of the museum association moving forward. All right, uh, downtown program service manager, Rebecca, here.
Good evening, everyone, under about stage, we're about ready to get started, but we're getting busy with the painting of the Cuzinder property, which is the building that houses Chef de Crepe and fantastic and Main Street Laundry. Um, don't know, based on their workload, whether we'll be able to paint it this year, just, it just depends on that particular contractor, the winning contractor, but we're hopeful. Um, Councilman Miller mentioned Smoke and Pipples, we continue to work with them, and with the action, the discussion last week at the loan review panel, uh, committee meeting, we have commitments, in effect, from all of the parties, three different financing partners, that is Mechanicsford Borough, we can get on, this is the items that he mentioned, the redevelopment authorities, not Cumberland County, the redevelopment authorities per se, these are not federal monies that come to Cumberland County, they're redevelopment authority funds, and, uh, numbers first. So, the identical partners that launched the business and, when we were here about three years ago, um, well before they opened, lighting that all up. We continue to look at properties, we have looked at a total of six properties, we have two that have been shortlisted, and we continue to work on them, looking at, can find changing contractor estimates and all, so we are hopeful that we will have a decision on that within the next couple of weeks. The Tidewake Man, that project continues to move ahead, if you look at Art and Wine Block, might have had a chance to hit the sneak peek and look at it, they made an application for their economic development liquor license, I've been working with their attorney, we're really pushing them to get this in, get it in this quarter as a pending project. PLCB looks at all of theirs by quarter, so they look at them in January, there can be two issued in the county each calendar year, there, with theirs, there are two already, and there are three more that are pending. Those all won't come in this year, but they'll be two next year, and those five, that means somebody's gonna be left out if they were all received. Tomorrow night, I'm going to a hearing in Upper Allen Township for another one, so we'll keep, uh, keep track of that. Working with a franchise business that, uh, looks to open in Cumberland County, they will not fit in a downtown based on the franchise requirement, so I've referred them to a couple different places, one of them is Legacy Park, they have the information on what those are going for, and the sizes and so forth, that's called Three Dog Bakery, the closest one is in State College, Cumberland, there's one in Westchester as well. Um, we had a wonderful time at the gardens on Saturday, and I want to thank the boroughs who were missing that lobbier all over Mechanicsford Borough for all the help that staff and council has provided us over the years as we watched that property and took action and bought the property and leased the property and started the design for the, uh, gardens and saw it, so, very appreciative of all the hard work that went into that particular project. I mentioned at, uh, the last meeting that we were changing our community development block grant program calendar, it has shifted now to beginning of January, a calendar year, January through December, so there were no applications, there was no call for applications in August or July like we normally do, that will happen in January and February. If you haven't missed anything, we'll have one year that has eighteen months, and I'll be from last July through December twenty twenty-two, that's what I have, anything for me? You'll notice too, that the amount in the loan program balance is very tiny, hundred and forty-four thousand dollars plus, and they're listing Smoke and Pipples on from the borough with retail. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda? I have two additions to the agenda, sir. Uh, discussion and action to appoint Sunny Polak to the zoning hearing board effective immediately, and discussion and action to appoint Ian Gardner to the shade tree commission effective immediately. Thank you. We will now have a motion to accept those additions. Salute. Thank you, Mr. Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the items are added to the agenda, we now need a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Booker, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarth. Properly, we've been seconded, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
Mr. Sizerzki.
Action item for Borough Council for October the fifth, twenty twenty-one. Discussion and action to approve Resolution seven, twenty twenty-one, setting the employee contribution rate for the police pension plan for twenty twenty-two, that's attachment one in your package.
Do I hear a motion? Salute. Thank you, Mr. Anthony, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarth. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And motion carries. Next item, discussion and action to approve Resolution eight, twenty twenty-two, setting the employee contribution rate for the non-uniform defined benefit pension plan for twenty twenty-two, that was attachment two. Salute. Thank you, Mr. Anthony, is there a second?
I'll second.
And Mrs. Agarth gets the second to ten. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item, please, discussion and action to approve the special event permanent application for Kinkout for Hunger to be held November fifth, twenty twenty-one, from four PM to November sixth, twenty twenty-one, at twelve PM, at Presbyterian Church at three hundred East Simpson Street, that's attachment three. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Booker, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarth, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
Thank you, next item.
Discussion and action on expenditures from all funds for the birth period beginning September first, twenty twenty-one, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, attachment four, and those are as listed below on the agenda.
I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Tomlin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarth, any discussion? Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the bills are paid. Next item, discussion and action to appoint Sunny Polak to the zoning hearing board effective immediately. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Tomlin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarth, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
Thank you, and Sunny Polak is now onboard, thank you. Next item, please, discussion and action to appoint Ian Gardner to the shade tree commission effective immediately. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And we welcome Ian Gardner to the shade tree commission. Are there any citizen comments at this time? Hearing none? Is there any other business? We'll start with Mrs. Martin and work our way around.
No.
I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
I have one thing to say, um, when I said about the, the dine-out at Jojo's, at least twice, I think, this year, where they've had dine-outs planned to benefit the library, they've been canceled at the last minute due to staff shortages at those restaurants, so if you have any plans to go, and we wish you would, please, uh, check before you run down and find out that it's been canceled. I don't think that, that'll be an issue at Jojo's, they seem to have pretty steady employment there, that's all. Thank you.
Nothing more? Nothing, sir?
I was about to say, I had a great evening last Thursday, uh, that the Wildcats Foundation looked at the ribbon cutting of the Coach Lippo, um, uh, schoolhouse, it was awesome, uh, the facility is amazing, and I, I just can't wait to see it for many years.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Nothing more.
Okay.
What is it? No, then? Uh, I just have one comment, you, you folks in the audience don't have it, but counsel there was the picture on the next to the last page of the, uh, when, when they started the demolition of the structure at two or three Main Street where the gardens appear now, if you look at that picture and drive by now, you can't imagine the transformation that has taken place, and this is all community effort, which is one of the things, as I've said before, that helps to make Mechanicsford such a great place.
Mr. President, will we? Okay, it's gavel down.
Better.
Halloween parade has come up on the twelfth.
Okay.
Right, seven o'clock, should be, should be out today.
Excellent, thank you. So, hearing no other comments, this meeting is adjourned.